You're listening to another episode of Mr. Allard's Neighborhood. This is the place where you're entitled to Brad's opinion. And now for your host, Brad Allard.
Well, you doing better today, Taylor? You sound better. Yesterday, you sounded like, you know, Sam Elliott doing one of those meat commercials or whatever. Or Barry White.
He got it to you this morning from Dwell.
Oh, Dwell. Okay, Ka-ching. They owe me five bucks. Anyway, but anyway, we're gonna talk to Shandy Stoggsdale again, again. Anyway, if I could sound like, oh, here she is again. No, no, she's.
Probably does feel that way.
No, no, well, that's their problem, Dad Gummit. This is my show. No, I like it when you come on for the real estate in particular, and I'm sure once this election's over.
Oh, yeah, let's get back to that.
Right. But we are starting early voting yesterday, and I believe you and Griffin have already voted.
Yes.
And I won't ask you who you voted for, but anyway, because that's your private right.
Although my kids asked me if I was voting for myself.
Well.
I was like, uh, yeah.
Yeah, if you don't vote for yourself.
If I lose my one vote and it's mine, I'm gonna be really sad.
You know, that actually is, is happened in a student council race when I was student council sponsor about 20 years ago. Some guy lost by like two votes and one of the votes was.
Was his own?
Yeah, because he didn't feel right about voting for himself.
I do understand that. I do. I mean, I'm glad that my kids asked that question. That's a great thing that they're not.
I can see Hadley asking that question.
It was actually Hadley.
Well, anyway, we're gonna, after we go through the sponsors, we're gonna talk about some of the issues we've been talking about, you know, been talking, I've been talking to the school board lately. I talked to Ryan on Monday, yesterday. I talked to Rob Duke on, on last Tuesday, and I talked to Caleb Mitchell on Friday. So this is the fourth in a row in school board races. So if you, you'd like, if you have the time or the inclination, you can kind of listen to all of them back to back, which you're gonna get a pretty good idea of where these four candidates out of the five.
Yeah, I think that's smart. That's.
Yeah, that's, you know, I've asked Miss Owen to be on, she was on before about five weeks ago, I believe. I haven't gotten response, but it's fine. You know, she, but it's no big deal. But, but you're gonna get a pretty good idea where most of the candidates stand on, on these races. And so it's, um, it's, it's been a real honor, really, and a privilege to do, do this because, uh, as you might guess, I'm very concerned about our schools and all this other business. But let's talk about our sponsors, who I have no concerns about. First of all, Daniel Crossford Burleson, he actually got on to me a couple of months ago, says, you don't have to announce me first. I said, no, Daniel, a big shot like you needs to go first.
It's true.
Yeah. So Daniel, thank you for what you do. Over at Crossford Burleson, check out the webpages, check out the, the programs, the training, the classes they do. They got all sorts of stuff over there. It isn't just go there and start slinging the iron around. You got all these other things going on as well, and you don't have to do it by yourself. Because they do have train supervision and people that take care of business. Okay, I'm trying to find the last group. I'm trying to, to save with, ah, there we go. All right. Thank you also, of course, Shandy here, you know, besides her being the, the school board candidate, she also is the queen of real estate here.
What about queen?
Okay, empress. I'm sorry. I didn't want to downgrade you. How is, how is real estate doing in Burleson these days?
The market's picking up. It's a spring market. I mean, the rates still, everybody hates the rates, but we gotta buy houses.
Yeah.
And the bottom is not falling out of prices. So just so everybody knows.
Well, I've been hearing conflicting things, like, you know, some housing markets are going down, but DFW here is pretty, holds its value. So.
As of now.
It's up now. Well, I don't think it's gonna change a lot. I mean.
It all has to do with jobs. So if we continue to have jobs in this area, we will, the market will continue to stay soluble.
Now, listeners out there, don't you want that kind of expertise on your school board? I mean, really? I mean, gee, that will be very helpful.
The unfortunate part of inflation is usually unemployment helps inflation, but let's don't, let's don't talk about that today.
Sounds like you were paying attention in economics class. Anyway, thank you also to Otto. And to remind you, we're having the Our Place gift cards contest, two gift cards and a drawing. If you show me an I voted sticker, picture, selfie, or even just say so, I'll take your word for it. And I want to make very clear that it's, we're not gonna ask who you voted for. We're not gonna care who you voted for, at least for this contest purposes. So, you know, join in, have a great idea, have, or I'm sorry, great lunch. I don't know why I said that. The Alzheimer's. But I have a, have a great lunch or a great breakfast, and you've done your patriotic duty, Dad Gummit, just like your old government teacher told you back in school. So Our Place Restaurant, I was there yesterday.
I was there yesterday, too.
Oh, were you?
I was.
Oh, yeah, I saw the posting after you voted.
I bet I was there earlier than you were.
Well, you know, what gets to me is that everybody, you know, there's a certain segment that wants a grunch and grumble about Otto and whatnot. Every time I go there, I feel lucky I didn't have to wait to get a table. It's always full.
Yeah.
And it's always good, too. So, but yesterday I got there and was meeting with the new sponsor, Old Pro Roofing, which will start next week.
Oh, fun. A roofing company, that's.
Yeah, but it's very helpful. Um, and we got there, it was about maybe 75% full. That is about 9:30.
Oh, yeah, because I was there at like 7:45-ish, and it was not very many people. It was easy to get a parking spot. I was in that, in between the early birds and the next level.
And then, uh, when I left an hour later, there was, I had, when I left, I left the only open parking, and there was cars circling around like vultures. Anyway, back to other things. Uh, thank you, Otto. Thank you to Chris. So we're at Walsley Garden Culture. It's a good place to get a smoke or a drink, and he has happy hour prices on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays, and he also has drink specials. I believe today is wine specials, I believe. I'm gonna have to look again. Yeah, and go over there. You know, you.
I know he does have Lost Oak Wine, because I've been there.
Oh, yeah. And it's good to have local.
Yeah, I do like that.
Yeah, I like the fact that he's, he's buying local. Um, somehow you just look natural with a cigar in your hand and go.
I do like a good cigar, but I haven't actually done that in a while. I don't think this week is probably the week for it.
No, you sit there and go, ah, I was telling Jimerson the other day. You get that, that gravelly smoky voice, ugh.
Oh, no.
No, no, thank you. Okay.
Let's avoid that.
All right. Also, thank you to Tiffany over at Local Life TX.com. Uh, she'll be getting a new issue out next week, and it's, uh, she does these local loves, and I believe in June, she's gonna do a local heroes, which.
Oh, that'll be fun. That's a great idea.
It is. And she's done that several times.
Oh, she has, okay.
Yeah, yeah, she did that last summer, and Sarah Carlson and Daniel Basin, I got on there. I nominated them.
Oh.
Yeah. And then on the cover, there was Mary Slaney, if you know who she is.
Yes, well, she just got like a big award.
Athena Woman of the Year, yeah. And Jennifer Woods got the Burleson Citizen of the Year.
I did hear that.
Which is very well-earned and appropriate. She'll be on about a month or so. She, you know, she has a show every month here, but she said, you know, politics time, I might want to wait a month. So, um, Local Life, you know, the magazine will be out very soon. Also, thank you to Gayla at Southern Gym.
Hey, there was painters there yesterday.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, Robin tells me that it's probably gonna be about towards the end of, uh, end of May now, and they've been trying really, really hard. And Gayla was real sad because Kentucky Derby's coming up pretty soon, and she always has a Kentucky Derby party. And it just, they're just in between, so they can't do it. But they have a big sale on their inventory, so go take, check it out. Mother's Day's coming.
She has some beautiful pieces.
Mm-hmm. And, and, and very lovely, lovely assistants. Anyway.
Yes. You happen to be partial to one.
Well, yeah, but don't tell Robin. Sorry, it's, that was just right, set up right there for me. Anyway, first do detailing.
Okay, wait, this is new?
Yes, it is. Kayla Patino is a new one, about three weeks now. Um, thanks for listening. Anyway, so, uh, Kayla will come to your house or car, do your car wash at your house or at your business, whatever. That is 817-776-0478. That's 817.
I'm gonna have to save him.
Yeah, well, it, yeah, several of the B and I people have used him, and they just said that, look, their car looked better than when they bought it.
Oh, nice.
So he does a really good job, very meticulous. So 817-776-0478. Also, DeeDee Simpson with Thrive, help you in a total business package. One time I called her social media, and she liked to slap the teeth out. I mean, no, it's a whole package. It's not just, you know, SEO stuff. It's also, you know, billing and correspondence and promotional stuff. I use it myself to get my stuff out there. She put me on a bunch of podcast platforms I hadn't even heard of, and I guess it works. I've been, I got one month, I had 12 hits from Belgium.
Oh, wow.
Then I thought, do I know anybody in Belgium? And they must be really smart over there. Anyway.
Or they're just interested in Texas. What's happening in Texas?
Or they were so bored, they couldn't find their phone and it got stuck. 520-955-7860. And it's 520-955-7860. Call DeeDee, and she'll get you set up and get your business out there. You know, it'd be really good if you promoted the show in here and Local Life with DeeDee. You'll, you'll be a Fortune 500 company in no time. All right, Texas Farm Bureau, Melissa Harmon, 682-804-0534. That's 682-804-0534. She'll really do you a, a, a good job analyzing your insurance and making sure you're getting the best rates possible. And, uh, you know, I had a pretty good insurance company. I wasn't unhappy with it, and she said, let me look anyway, and she saved me some money. I mean, about 60 bucks a month on the house insurance, plus upgraded my coverage, you know, to, you know, I'm sure you get that conversation a lot.
I've had this, you know, it's tax season, which is the whole thing. But, uh, you know, everybody's talking about their payments going up, and I'm like, it's taxes and insurance. So that is the one thing you can shop is your insurance. So I always say, look at it every year. You don't have to go anywhere with it, but it's worth looking at.
She'll tell you if it's, she can't beat it. You know, she's, she's a good, honest, God-fearing woman. She won't, she wouldn't hose you. She would say, you know, well, I can't beat this, so good luck. And our latest one, it started this, this week or last week, actually, Stop Restoration.
Oh, yeah, I like her.
You, you met Lisa before. She, she's very sweet, and her husband, Morris, a very impressive man. Um, Stop Restoration will help you if you have like a water leak or whatever else. When I first was hooking her up for being a sponsor and all this, I was kind of thinking about natural disasters and all this. So I said, well, that's part of it, but actually, a bigger part of her business is like the water heater leaked and you got mold problems, or your toilet leaked, and you're, it's buckled up your floor and all this other stuff, and they take care of those kind of things.
Oh, nice. Okay.
Yeah, and they're really, really good. And they're mold removal specialists, which is not something you just advertise. You have to get certified and get, you know, licensed by the EPA and, you know, dispensation from the Pope or whatever. It's really hard, you know? So it's, but you don't get very many of those that are certified mold removers.
Yes.
So there you go. I don't know if you have any nonprofits today. I do know that in a couple of weeks, we're gonna have both Crazy Eight and Next Step, and they both got stuff going on. I know right now, uh, Crazy Eight has something on May 13th.
Yes, that's the city on a hill.
Yeah, they need to, you need to check that out, because that's a big deal. Lisa Schwartz does a great job. And I'll have Liz Murphy on, I think, the ninth or something like that. It's that week. So.
Oh, good.
All right, let's talk about school. Uh, yesterday, I was talking with Ryan, and I talked with Caleb, and I talked with Rob, and we all kind of circled around several of the, several of the same topics. One of the topics, and Dallas always mentioned this as well in her appearance, teacher stress.
Yes.
You know, you're aware of it, certainly.
Of course.
Do you, what is your view on how that could, as a board member, you could help alleviate that teacher stress?
A lot of the teacher stress is coming down from the state.
Right.
And we are, you know, we, I'm just speaking like I'm on the board already, but we're, the board is having to basically.
Things in the universe.
Yes, we're manifesting today. Um, so the board is having to pass that along, right? So I, you know, I, I have many teacher friends, and I ask this question a lot, like, what would help you be less stressed in your job? You know, they vent to me a lot, which is fine. That's what friendship is about. But a lot of it's just, most teachers tell me it's more about just feeling supported. They understand that in and of itself, the district cannot take away a lot of the things that have been piled upon them. But when a teacher feels seen and heard, it creates an environment where they want to be there. They want to continue working. They want, you know, if you feel pushed aside, you're gonna want to leave. I mean, I think that's true of any job.
Well, there were periods in my 28-year tenure at BISD that I felt like I was not getting heard, and it was very frustrating, because, you know, I know the answers to everything, of course. You know, that's why you're entitled to my opinion. But, you know, believe me, that was not an operative working career phrase back in the day. But anyway, I've talked about this before with you, with others, is that, you know, the state and the nationals put a lot of pressure by testing and all this other stuff, but on the local level, I wish something could be done about class size. Now, I keep hammering on this. I talked with both, all three of the previous guests we've had.
Yes.
I honestly think that would solve some of the stress, not having 32 in the class, particularly at the freshman level. My gosh, I, I, I really felt sorry for a lot of my freshman teacher colleagues, because they'd have 32 in their English one or, or algebra class or whatever, and, you know, and they had all these very subgroups within it they had to pay attention to.
Right.
I, you know, I just thought that's an impossible job. And so, you know, when I get a class at AP of juniors and seniors at 32, I mean, there's a couple of knuckleheads in there, but I, they'd buy.
It's different.
Yeah, by and large, the discipline issues weren't there. You know, it's very unusual. I went, maybe go through a whole year without writing a kid up.
Right.
Whereas my senior.
Well, you're in AP Adule for different reasons, too.
Right. And I had older students that helped a little bit, because some of matured, some of the knuckleheads moved on. But you think you're, you know, is that something that maybe y'all could look into more about? We need to get these, these class sizes down.
I think you definitely can look into it. I think there's a multitude of issues that that creates. Um, obviously, when you're trying to lower the class size, you need more space. Um, while I do think there's room, after speaking to, I told you I met with Michael Lancy, and we talked about, like, are we gonna have to build new schools? Um, and he assured me that he feels like there's room for us to grow in the schools that we have. Um, but if you're talking about growing as Burleson grows and the number of students, that's different than cutting down class sizes. And then I am afraid that in order to get class sizes where we need them, that will require a bond.
Well, I was talking with Ryan Richardson about this prior to the show, and I never got around to it. I wish I had. But he says that the last bond, when they built several of the elementary schools, they built them in such a way that they can expand on that premises without having to build another school.
Yes.
And Centennial still has room to expand without having to build a third high school or something like that.
I would have to look at what the plan is, right? Like, was that plan made to help the class size in general, or was that plan made to, we keep those as flex spaces? Which a lot of things are, as we grow, we fill in up that space. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, but, but that's how Ryan described it, is it was meant to also keep the class sizes low at the elementary level, but also to accommodate the growth, because normally.
And Ryan's gonna have knowledge that I do not have, because he literally is on the board. So he knows a lot of the history of that. So I'm liter, I'm just, I'm like, looking at the positive.
Positive emanations into the universe when you, when you are on the board.
I definitely think it's something we should look at, but we have to weigh, is that possible without costing more money tax-wise? And everybody got their tax statements this week, so.
I did. And, you know, I guess because being on my side of it, um, uh-oh, look at Rachel Brainard, Rachel Brainard Elder says, she's a quick learner. This is one of your very best friends from all time, isn't it?
Yes, who's been a teacher for over 20 years.
She's a sweetie, isn't she?
Yes.
And live wire.
She was, what year was Rachel Teacher of the Year?
Oh, my gosh, every year, I would think. But, yeah. Well, the thing about the, the expansion, you know, they built Kerr like that, too, to, to, you know, grow into its.
And that's what you hope. Obviously, if you're passing a bond package, you should build, build in growth to it. We don't want to just solve the problems of today. We want to make sure that money's gonna last for a long time. 2016, Rachel, Teacher of the Year.
Well, well deserved. And, you know, the thing about it also is that there is gonna be a time we're gonna need a couple more schools, and, you know, and, you know, the bond issues at the city level has been a big political issue. And when they tried to pass a bond 15 years ago, they built Centennial and a couple of other schools, it was a big political issue. Bond issues are very sensitive topics.
They are.
Because you're taking on all this debt and, and whatnot, and, you know, the rates may change and things like that. That's, like I said, it's a big issue.
But Centennial was built when my son was going into kindergarten, and now he's 20. So like, I feel like they have made that bond really last in such a way that that was a good bang for our buck.
Well, the thing about Centennial was controversial, but is, do we need another high school?
Yeah.
And what, that was a big deal, because it was gonna split. Uh-oh, again, she's making you funny about Ms. Crowley.
Oh, my goodness, please. We're gonna work right on through that comment.
But anyway, we, uh, we were talking about what was probably the Centennial versus BHS, was that, you know, the discrepancies and, and, uh, the facilities and whatnot was pretty pronounced.
Right.
It's not like BHS was some, you know, crap hole or something.
Looking back, there could have been a lot of avenues. You could have built a high school and then had a career center built separately. So you had equal high schools, and then you had your career technology center that was separate. But we can't look back and say, I mean, I think we could look back and say, we should have done this.
I still think we should have built a ninth grade academy on the, in fact, they were going to do it. There was talk about where, whereas now the indoor practice facility for BHS, and that would have solved the problem, I don't know for how long, but it would have solved it and kept this as the one high school town. But some people said, no, let's just bite the bullet and do it now.
Well, and I had even thought at the time, um, maybe we should have done either the middle schools that were there, the two middle schools that existed, do a sixth or a ninth grade, and then have one big middle school at BHS, and then only one high school. Like, there were a lot of different avenues that could have been solved.
Yeah.
But I think we had, at the time, we had a superintendent that kind of had an agenda.
Boy, did he.
So, you know, and his agenda was met.
Yes. Well, but, you know, one of the things you'd have to navigate as a board member is the rivalry, and I don't mean sports rivalry so much, but the rivalry between the two high schools, which does exist.
Oh, of course it does.
You know, because there is competition for resources and attention. I mentioned before, when Centennial was open, like, BHS teachers and that stuff, like, hey, we're over here, you know, we felt like the first wife, where Centennial was the trophy wife that was 20 years younger and blonde.
Right.
And, um, you know, that kind of stuff, and we felt.
Yeah, I think it is helpful they're not in the same district right now.
Well, it does help, yeah.
That's helpful. But you're right. It, it does, it fills very much haves and have-nots sometimes. I think that, uh, BISD has done a really good job at navigating those trouble spots and trying their best to be like, okay, this wasn't done right on so-and-so's watch, so we need to figure out a way to remedy this.
Well, I think what also, you also have, some of the issue has been kind of lessened a bit with the schools of choice.
Oh, for sure. And I think that's helped also some class sizes in places, too.
It has with the elementary. I had Lindsay Bird on about three months ago, right, February, in fact, because they were about to open up the choices and whatnot. And, uh, it did help with some of those things we're talking about now, about keeping the class sizes somewhat more level. And it also kind of alleviated some of the, well, how come this school has this and not mine doesn't, because now you can actually go to that school.
Right.
But back, when I was still teaching there, when Centennial was offering things at BHS, wasn't, and vice versa, so you had bus kids back and forth, and it was a real beating.
I think my main question on schools of choice, and it's something I'll ask, um, when I'm elected, is, is why are not all elementary school of choice? Are we moving toward that? Because to me, if, you know, I understand the process, how they started it. I understand what schools have been chosen and why, but are we moving to all elementaries being schools of choice? And then, like, if you live in that area, like, I live in Branson, so Chandler goes to Branson. I did not try a school of choice for her. Now, middle school, we did school of choice, but, um, you know, you have the option of staying on that campus, or is everything gonna end up being a school of choice? Oh, Rachel, I would like to see the Academy of Nola Dunn transition to having zoned students as well as lottery. I, I would agree with that, because, you know, Nola Dunn is, is a totally different animal, but now we, we're a different district than what we were when Nola Dunn was created.
That was, you talk about a controversial decision.
It was.
That was, uh, uh, that was under Jeff Turner's administration, Dr. Turner. And when they opened up that school, it was meant to be for a different type of learners, not alternative learners, but, you know.
Right. Learn at your own pace.
And all that. Very quickly became a gifted and talented magnet.
Right.
And a lot of the people that had connections got their kids in there, and it was a mess.
Right.
And I don't know if that's still the case now. I haven't heard that in many years.
I'm not sure either, so I don't want to speak on that.
Well, I haven't heard any controversy in the last decade or so, or about it. But I know when it, when it opened up, the first three, four years, it was a hotspot.
Am I right in saying that the kids who would go to the Academy of Nola Dunn are currently going to Norwood? They're zoned for Norwood. They would be zoned for the Academy of Nola Dunn if that wasn't a total lottery system.
I, that, see, I didn't really ask those kind of questions of Dr. Bird, because I, um, I, you know, I didn't, wasn't familiar with all the process as much, and I didn't know which schools at the time were and were not. I found out Taylor is not a school of choice.
No, Taylor's not. Klingsschel's not. Frazier's not. Um, uh, the one on the freeway, I always get it wrong. Hyke is not.
Oak Grove?
Yes, what's.
And Brock.
Brock. That's, I was, I knew it was a B, but I could not think of, Brock is not.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Norwood just got changed to the environmental.
Right. That, you know, and that's great, you know, that they had that kind of stuff going on. You know, I was, I've mentioned this to all three of your, your fellow candidates, is that we think that sometimes Burleson is a little small town, but actually, in many ways, they are on the edge, a leading edge of educational innovations.
Agree.
Even when, when I first started at the high school in 1990, and I got involved in Townton Gifted, they were coming all over the state to check out Ann Brock's program.
Right.
Where Angela Sifford Special Ed Program. And they've come looking at these for CTE for our game school.
It's important that we continue that trend. Not that, here's, it's a tricky situation. You want Burleson to feel like a small town to some degree, but you also want it to have all the conveniences and technology, technological advances. I'm talking about city and school.
Well, you've seen it as a real estate agent.
Yeah, I mean, you, it's, it's a very, it's a balancing act, right? And so, um, it's important that we honor the past, but we continue to push toward the future, because like, nothing is worse than a school district that gets stagnant. But you also don't want to grow it to a point where it's like, what is this and where did this come from? Like, this has no, the bones that were created so many generations ago are, are just gone.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, it's like an old house. You want to respect where it's been, but also improve upon it. You don't want to just let it sit and, and deteriorate.
Well, you know, it's interesting, though. You went to the high school when it was at Kerr, or now the early college. Have you been in that building yet?
Right. Yes, it's, it's nice, very nice.
I'll be there tonight, teaching my, my night class. And it's like, you know, even though I started my high school career there, I don't recognize it at all, you know, but it doesn't.
But I think it's great that we took that campus, and we can not tear it down, per se, but, but use it. Now, I know there's parts that will have to be torn down, which.
Well, that was funny you bring that up, because the reason why people say, you know, we maybe ought to remodel or redo this, we can't in some of those buildings.
For sure. They had, the abatement would just be crazy.
Asbestos, and every year, Robert Griswold, you get up and say, it's that time, oh, it's asbestos talk again. I mean, like, it was.
I love Mr. Griswold.
It was like an annual tradition, okay, at the teacher, uh, in-service day or whatever it was.
Because they had to warn you that the building had asbestos.
He'd stand up and go, tell us about asbestos, Robert. I sense you brought it up.
Well, it, I mean, it would be just, it's more cost-effective to just abate it, tearing it down and removing it than to try to, like, remove it, remove it, and use that building. It doesn't make any sense.
Pretty beat up, man, some parts. Uh, I mean, I think some of those parts of that building were there when the pioneers found this place. But anyway, it, but I had a lot of fond memories of it.
Oh, for sure.
You know, I, you know, it's like, oh, stained carpet, ooh, I spilled my coffee, yeah, just rub it in. When I didn't know any better, and I had cowboys in the back of the room with the spit cup, you know, and they'd miss, and just rub it in.
Yeah, they just spit on the carpet.
Yeah, so it's, oh, I missed it. You know, it's a, and then they was told, no, you're really not supposed to let them, you know, have dip in the class. Okay, fine. I was a young man. I didn't know any different.
You were the cool teacher then.
Yeah, well, I was the, the wide-eyed, inexperienced, hanging-on-by-my-fingernails teacher then, too, so.
Hilarious.
Well, let's, uh, switch subjects a little bit about security. You and I were both at that summit meeting that Gabriana and the Chamber put on. Wasn't that very nice?
It was very nice.
And Dr. Jimerson gets up there, and, and it's hard to get him to speak publicly. I mean.
Oh, I know, he's so shy.
Yes, he's so retiring, and it's like, no, we think, we called him when, uh, he reminds us of a swole Stephen Colbert, you know?
That's a good one, actually.
But, you know, he's a good sport about all that kind of stuff. But he showed, uh, what we're doing, and Michaela Hill sent me one of the videos, and the one on security, you'd like to see it? Yes, you'd like to see it. Let's show it.
Okay.
My name's Curtis Brandon. Richard Morris.
Cameron Pilgrim.
Dietrich Jones.
Officer Scott Bartlett.
Gary Gray.
Nick Grace.
James Ingle.
Brad Schaefer.
Officer Travis Brown.
Nicholas Storn.
Casey Martin.
Woody Holman.
Brett McDonald.
John Dana.
Stacy Singleton.
Jack Goldman. I'm the school safety officer for Klingsschel Elementary. BISD's evolution in regards to safety is very innovative. Uh, I started as the first and only SRO, uh, divided between the high school campus and a middle school campus. Since that time, the pro, program has grown by a number of officers and will continue to grow this future school year. In addition, adding the SSOs to the elementary school, it just exemplifies and shows the district's initiative with regards to safety. It's good to be home. Safety is guarding the welfare and the health of these children.
Providing a safe environment for students.
The safety of the kids, the teachers, and the community.
Safe place to learn and to teach for the students and the staff.
Creating an environment of security.
Doing my very best to keep my students and my staff at my school safe.
That kids can come to school and feel safe, and parents can send their kids to school and know that, know that they will be safe.
Protecting the students, the teachers, the visitors.
Safety in schools is paramount.
This experience is really has been unique in the sense that you, you really do get to see how people, students, develop over time, when they come in as freshmen, how they mature. they mature, uh, just, just the changes people make as they grow.
I mean, that these are our kids. They're, you know, I'm a parent. I've had two kids come through and graduated from Burleson High School. It's, you know, these kids are our, our families, our futures. It's, it's everything.
I, I didn't expect as much positive feedback as that we get. I mean, the first month that I was here, almost every parent that was coming in was, we're glad that you're here. We, we're glad to see that you're here. And this job working for BISD at a elementary school, the kids are so nice to you. The parents, the teachers, I just love it.
This position in itself is extremely important to make sure these kids make it home at the end of the day.
You know, our, our main focus is to let the teachers teach and feel safe and let the students learn and feel safe. But it's brought me so much joy.
But it's important to me, uh, the students and the staff are now my family. And I feel like I'm taking care of my family.
Safety is the priority.
The number one priority.
Highest priority.
Top priority.
Our number one priority.
Priority number one.
Safety is our number one priority and our only focus.
Isn't that a good video?
It really was. And, um, I've, they give a safety, uh, briefing basically at every school board meeting. And so one school board meeting was specifically on what's going on with the SSOs, which I took so many notes on that. And I have, I've posted on my page how I really do feel like Burleson has made great strides with safety. Like I don't feel like my children are unsafe. Like, I mean, in high school, you have the kids who do dumb things.
Really?
But as far as safety is concerned, I do feel like it is a priority with our district and it's huge. And it was a priority in the district before what happened in, um.
Uvalde.
Uvalde, yes.
Well, and that's, that's, that's what point I've been making is this is not something that was a response to Uvalde. It was proactive as before then.
Right. It had to have been. There's no way we could be at this point yet.
Oh, no. And then of course to the high school, we had Jack Goldman.
Oh, well, well, and see, that was so sweet to me because Jack Goldman was my SRO in middle school and high school.
Uh huh.
So I love that he's back.
Yeah. And we had Jerry Stringer and then we had Mike Alley. And my wife is, was very appreciative of Brad Schaefer. And I saw a couple of old friends, of course, the legend, Stacy Singleton and Singleton.
Singleton.
Singleton. I keep, I'm a Baylor guy and I think of Mike Singleton. Sorry.
Sorry, Stacy.
Stacy Singleton. Um, also, um, Woody Holman is an old friend of mine and.
Well, and Travis Brown, my, my kids grew up with Travis's kids.
And also Cameron Pilgrim is a BHS. Nick Grace is from BHS. I think he graduated from near your time.
His wife is Jennifer Grace.
Right.
She's also a teacher.
Jennifer Shields. And there's a maiden name if I remember.
Yes.
Yeah. So there's a lot of hometown connection there.
For sure.
You know, and Mr. Brandon there is hometown. And then everybody got a little clutch when I saw Mr. Moore. Um, all right, we have Woody at Norwood says, Rachel, well, you're lucky because he is as fine a man as you'll meet. He's a good guy and just earnest as can be. And so good.
And those kids love having them. And I think that is just a great thing for kids to see at such a young age that law enforcement is there to help. Um, it's just a great establishment at a really young age. They're not just there to pull you over and give you tickets.
Well, also the fact is that, uh, I have feel every confidence in the world that if some unfortunate thing happened in our school, those guys will be first in line.
For sure.
Right there, you know, taking the first shot and.
Right. They're not going to wait an hour.
Yeah. And that kind of stuff. You won't see what you saw in Uvalde.
Oh, gosh.
And, uh, so I was, um, I don't know, I, I, you know, made me feel a lot better about the situation because, you know.
Yeah.
You know, in my time, have we ever had a situation like that? We had a couple of lockdowns. It had nothing to do with, uh, BHS under, it was like, uh, you know, the gas station down the street was held up and they didn't want the escaping felon to hide in the school.
School mass shooting did not happen until I was a freshman in college. Um, Columbine was when I was in college and I do remember vividly being like, what is happening? And now, I'll be honest, my kids, it comes on the news and they're like, oh, another shooting. I'm, I mean, I'm not going to lie. They just are, it was so shocking to us in 1997. We sat, it was kind of like the OJ Simpson trial. We sat and watched what is happening, but our kids aren't that way. And that is super sad to me.
Yeah. Well, they're a little bit jaded, you might say.
Yeah. I do, you know, I'm glad that we have the officers to make them feel safe, but it's a different world.
It is. And, uh, you know, a lot of times what, what the SROs on campus for, at least at BHS, it wouldn't so much like for, you know, these kind of dramatic drastic events, but you know, breaking up fights.
Right.
Uh, you're clearing out the hallway, uh, you know, there, somebody said that they're doing drugs.
Smoking.
Yeah, whatever, those kinds of things. And they were there.
Bathroom fires.
You know, uh, as far as, you know, there's things like that. And you're going to have knuckleheads at the high school. And I hate to break this to y'all, Burleson, but yes, we do.
Yeah. Kids are kids. Kids will always be kids.
Yeah. And so they were, it was good to have that kind of presence on board. And, and then also there's like, how many things didn't happen because they were there? And it's, it just, you can't prove the negative, right? But.
Right.
But that was a really, I thought was a really great deal. Now, as far as other things that you've been, you've been doing a lot of talking with a lot of the board members currently and with parents. What are you learning from all this?
Um, I know the board, um, really does have our kids' best interest at heart. You know, I know that a lot of the decisions they make have to be behind closed doors legally.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Um, so everybody always likes that, you know, be transparent, be transparent. But legally, a lot of things cannot be as transparent as even school board members would like. Um, I respect all of them. They all come with different expertise and I appreciate what Pat, I met with Pat, which I love Pat. And she said, you know, I like to lean toward people's expertise. Like there's no way I can know all of the things. And she said, like financially, I lean toward Mike, you know, and sports wise, I lean towards Sean. And she said, you know, if it's, if it's teachers, I have expertise in teachers in the classroom and, and, and I bring that to the table. So I like that it's not a free for all kind of, everybody's kind of speaking to their, their expertise and, um, and then they trust each other.
Well, I like the fact that, you know, even when I didn't agree with the board's decision, I knew what kind of people they were and I could trust them. You know, there, there are times that I thought, ah, I wish she hadn't have made that choice and or that's not the right one.
Right.
But I didn't make that, uh, decision as based on what I thought was better, but it wasn't because I thought those people were not doing the right thing. If they saw it.
And I can tell you after meeting with them personally, I can promise you, they all have opinions behind that closed door.
Oh, oh, sure.
And they give them. But it's a quorum, right? You, you can give an opinion and I, I could walk in a room and, and give an opinion and have all kinds of facts to back up why I feel the way that I feel. And I could still be beaten the vote.
Oh, yeah. And it's fine. And, you know, but like I said, the character of the people that I never have questions about, and that really makes a big difference. Uh, you know, you see, see what goes on in other forums, like our city sometimes gets a little bit crazy and whatnot. And it's like, you don't see that on the school board.
Right.
Now, and they're not all lockstep in opinion, I could promise you.
No.
But they, they, I think they treat each other with enough respect for each other's opinions and character that, you know, if it's a five to two vote, they don't, you know, it's not, not hostile or whatever.
They're not attacking the other person's character because they didn't like that decision.
Yeah. And then so we've had a lot of good school board members over the years and, you know, we've had a couple of, you know, dips, but, uh, you know, that, that's normal. But I would say the vast majority of people who serve as the school board have really different agendas than maybe people that have get into other forms of politics. Because you, you know, not many people are going to take this and build on it for a future political career or whatever. And they have children or, or did have children in the system and that kind of thing. And so they're doing it for the right reasons. So, um, so again, I feel good about that. You know, when Jimerson came on board, you know, and I served, I think the last few years under his tenure, um, there's some choices he made. I thought, well, if he really knew what was going on down the classroom, he may not have made that choice. Blah, blah, blah.
Right.
But now that I'm sitting out here.
Mm hmm.
More globally, uh, some things make more sense. And I'm, you know, when I had the BISD people on, had the school board candidates on, I get a, a better perspective of some of these things that are going on. And I guess you'll have that too, because I'm putting it out in the universe.
Right. Yeah. I mean, I'd love to have more perspective.
Do you see?
More perspective never hurts.
Yes. But do you see an area that you might want to, you know, focus on? Cause everybody has that area you mentioned before, you know, Sean with the sports and, and, and the, you know, curriculum with Jerry, you know, she's a teacher and administrator. It's on and on. Do you have an area you want to focus on?
I have two specific areas. I think sometimes they can go hand in hand. And I've talked about this at length with people, but, um, number one, the tag along with the safety is mental health. I do feel like what, you know, I don't know exactly what it looks like, but we need to be making strides with young kids to teach them coping skills. You know, um, cognitive behavior therapy is huge right now. Um, all it is, is literally just teaching kids how to pause. Like, okay, this is what my emotions want me to do. Pause. What's a better option? And it, it fills them with like, you could do this or you could do that. It's very basic.
Well, here's somebody I would suggest you meet with if you haven't already, Courtney Peets.
Okay.
She runs the health programs here at the high schools and DSD, what am I saying? The whole, whole district. She is the, it's not, it's not just the head nurse. I mean, it's the entire, uh, uh, offerings that we do is for health services and BISD. And she's the head of that. And she's also a former student, wonderful young woman. Uh, that would be worth your time.
I have met Courtney. I have not actually had a sit down conversation with her.
And well, that she could tell you what they're doing in mental health as best they can. And it's, it's a little bit, you know, there's state things and there's.
And I know there is. I just, I would like us to be as we are, um, usually on the edge, the cutting edge of things with safety, with schools of choice. But I think we can be on the cutting edge of mental health.
I think her formal title, she's Director of Health Services.
Okay.
You know, so like, I don't want to imply that all she does is hand out, you know, you know.
Right.
Aspirin or whatever. She does, she does the whole thing and, and, and she's very impressive and.
And that's not an overnight fix.
No.
That's something that's going to continue to be ongoing and, and, but I, we, I just want to see that we are making strides in that area.
Yeah. Well, a lot of people don't understand is the schools are the repository of all of society's problems.
For sure.
You know, because they, you know, they talk about, well, we need better discipline in school. Well, you need better discipline at home.
No, I agree.
You know, you know, we need more, you know, rigorous homework.
Parents have to be in it.
Yeah.
In order for the schools to be successful.
There's no way it can be successful without the parents doing. And the elephant in the room is that quite often these parents are, not all of them.
Right.
Not even a majority of them. But we have enough of them. They basically think they've done their duty by, to making sure they got to school.
Right.
Hopefully.
Right.
No, 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 no. You need to, you know, check out their homework. You should go to open house. You should know the teacher's names as best you can. Uh, you should every now and then email the teacher and say, how's my son doing? And I tell you, it is so much easier for me, as a teacher, to go to a parent and say, hey, you know, little Johnny here needs to kind of pick up his game, if I already had established a communication line with them.
Right. Well, and that's a bridge that needs to be, we need to make that divide. We need to build a bridge there. And that's ongoing, right? There's always going to be people who don't do what they're supposed to be doing with their children. I mean, in a perfect world, everybody would be amazing parents and, you know, we'd all do everything right, but we don't always all get it right. I think that teachers need to feel like parents support them and parents need to feel like teachers support them.
Yeah. It isn't just not, they're not doing it right, but sometimes they can't have the opportunity to write, single parents and stuff like that, working two jobs. And, you know, they're working the shift work. And so I'm gone at five o'clock. So I'm just hoping my son gets up in the morning.
Right. And I think some of that is as, as we change as a society and we are a little more vulnerable with what we're dealing with. Um, I think my parents and my grandparents were very much, you hold all that close to the vest. No one needs to know your struggles. That shows weakness, right? Where in, in reality, if a parent went to a teacher and said, hey, I'm doing my best over here. This is, this is what I'm struggling with. Like, um, I mean, I've had to have conversations with teachers of like, this is what's happening in our home and I'm not sure how that's affecting my child, but just keep it in mind.
Oh, yeah. I, I had several, I had many conversations like that. It said, you know, we're going through a divorce.
Right.
Or we haven't seen his mother or his father in the years.
Right.
Uh, you know, uh, he's gotten in trouble with the police. She, she is seeing a boy I don't care for and it's dragging her away from what we taught her.
I think it's so helpful for teachers to know that background.
It does.
And sometimes I think it's helpful for teachers to reach out to parents and say, listen, I've got a lot going on and I'm doing my very best, but I'm going to need help.
Oh, Rachel mentions Love and Logic classes. We were taught that. And having parents involved in it surely couldn't hurt.
For sure.
And I know they have a, a program in Love and Logic for parents. But you know, again, a lot of parents, they, they're overwhelmed if they got like three kids, right? And, uh, and they're, they have to work and, you know, and they got all these other issues. And they're just like, teachers, take care of this for us.
Yeah.
Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't. And, and whatever society problems or, or problems society is having, we're going to have them too.
Yes.
We're not going to be like this safe place that nothing like that ever happens.
Right.
So, you know, that's, that's just, that's just the nature of the job. And the fact that you're so tuned in on that with three kids and.
Yes.
You know, as attentive as you've been, I think you, that places you in a very good position to be an effective board member.
Well, and my second thing I want to focus on is you hear me talk about it a lot is neurodivergency. And I do feel like Burleson does a fairly good job at helping our neurodivergent children.
Can you explain in layman's terms what you're talking about?
So neurodivergency is any, any kind of diagnosis, ASD, um, ADHD, dyslexia, dysgraphia, um, dis, uh, there's one for math, discalcula. I think it's.
I haven't heard that one before.
Yeah, there's a whole.
Discalcula sounds like some Roman goddess.
There's tons of diagnoses, right? I mean, there's, there's also some behavioral diagnoses. Those are all kids who are considered neurodivergent. That just means that their brain reacts differently. Um, you know, I do believe that that's a hard road for public education. And you can't, it's never going to be perfect. But, um, if you have parents who are willing, and I've met with parents who are willing to meet the teachers wherever they need to be met and they still feel like their kids are falling through their cracks, that is not okay with me. Um, I had one of those and I did understand that the district's hands were tied to an extent. I do feel like now that I am on the other side of that battle, I could have pushed harder in areas. I just didn't quite understand. And at the moment I was overwhelmed with just trying to do what was best for my child.
Yeah. One of the things Rob Duke brought up last week is sometimes the parents don't know what's available to them.
I agree. I would agree with that.
Yeah. And so, uh, and it was going to be one of his priorities. Ryan also agreed with that.
Yeah.
To, to, to a degree, certainly. Uh, I didn't ask that of Mr. Mitchell, but the fact is, is that, that, uh, it can be confusing.
It feels like a web that you're never going to quite get through. It feels like a web that you're never gonna quite get through.
Well, and also the idea is that they think the schools are just automatically gonna support the teacher. I could promise you.
Right.
If the teacher's in the wrong, they may not, you know, beat them in front of you, Mr. And Mrs. Burleson. But.
Yeah.
Once you leave the room, it's gonna be an unpleasant conversation when they will not enjoy it.
Well, and I learned, you know, my second child's, granted, she is purely dyslexic. My first child has a lot of diagnosis, but purely dyslexia. But I did learn how to navigate that differently by the time I got with her, just because of what I was learning in the private school sector. And her experience has been completely, completely different. Her, her arts are, she basically runs her arts now. I mean, she's 17. But, you know, she knows what she needs and what she doesn't need. I don't really have to ask for those things. I'm just there to kind of like, maybe push her to talk where she doesn't necessarily like to talk.
Wait a minute. She's not gonna pursue the career as a standup comedian?
Oh, my goodness, no. Both my older kids are shy, which is weird if you know their parents.
Also, but number three, I believe.
Number three made up for all of them. So let's just wait. Like, here's the deal. I would just will say is, who knows what's gonna happen with number three. So just know I'm doing my best.
Well, we're getting close on time as always. And it's just because time flies when we're having fun here.
Yes.
You're gonna be on next week, I believe.
Oh, I am?
I thought you were.
Oh, well, I'll be here. Just tell me when.
Let me look at my thrive calendar here.
I have no idea.
Good heavens, girl. I'd hate to be sitting here by myself, you know?
If you send me a reminder, I will be here.
Well.
Which you did send me a reminder.
Well, it's because you're in my thrive system.
I like it.
Yeah. I'm not just trying to hype up a sponsor, but I have no problem doing.
Used to when I was young. I could remember all the things. I didn't have to write anything down. And now it is not the case.
A week from today.
A week from today.
Yeah, okay.
I will be here.
Yeah. And I have, you know, mostly the only non-political show I have is, and believe me, emphasis, non-political, is Gabriana. It's gonna be on Chamber of Commerce. And I have sworn an oath. We'll talk strictly chamber business.
Yeah, poor Gabriana. She's right in the middle of all this mess.
Well, yeah. You know, most, I think everybody understands.
She's doing a great job though.
Fantastic at the show. I mean, I basically say, hello, Gabriana, and then I'll come back an hour later. Now, tell us what, what's new.
Yes.
Because she, she has all this stuff going on, you know?
She does.
I mean, chamber's active.
It is. And I will just tell you that I told her I need to join the chamber. I didn't for years, just because it was really decrepit. Like, it just functioned in a really old fashioned way. And then obviously Andy came on and it was getting better. And now Gabriana has just flown with that.
Oh, well, no, I've always enjoyed your shows. And so she'll be on next Monday. Now, coming up on my schedule, Thursday of Ronnie Johnson, which ought to be entertaining.
Yes.
You may not have heard this, but we're having a mayor's race.
I heard.
You've heard.
I don't, I don't have any opinions because I do not live in the city. I'm gonna keep my mouth closed.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You say you don't have any opinions?
I have opinions. I'm not gonna share them.
Of course not.
There's no reason to share them. I can't vote, so.
Yeah. Well, but I'm just saying he'll be on. And so guys out there, if you have questions for him, he'll be glad to answer them, I'm sure. Or he'll answer them anyway, glad or not. And then next week, I have Gabriana and I have you and then Ronnie again. So you're getting down to crunch time. It's early voting, like we mentioned. You, you, where did you vote? Is it the sub courthouse?
I voted the sub courthouse across from BHS.
Yes. So you walk, and but since you're not in the city, they have like two separate lines or something?
Well, no, you just give them your license and they write on the thing what you, I'm, I'm Burleson School. Or they say Burleson City. On Burleson City, you get school and city. They just have two, two different ballots.
I keep asking for several ballots and they never do it. Those ladies never come across. All right.
And then, oh, if you're in Tarrant County, because a lot of Burleson is in Tarrant County. Like, if you're in Alsberry, if you're north of Alsberry, you're Tarrant County.
Or Garden Acres.
Yeah. I mean, anything north of Alsberry is, is Tarrant County. Some of Garden Acres is not city of Burleson, but it is Burleson ISD. Look at your appraisal forms that you just got in the mail. If it says Burleson ISD on that tat where your taxes are paid, you can vote in the school board. If you are in Tarrant County, you can vote at Bicentennial Park in Crowley. That's the easiest one. It's quick in, quick out. You can vote at any Tarrant County polling place, but really that is the easiest one. It's small, it's doable, it's kind of off the beaten path.
Well, it's, obviously, every election's important. This one, I mean, what I've always taught in my government classes is we can get focused on, you know, presidential races and whatever else. But, because it's, you know, more high profile, whatever. But these are the races that make, make the difference.
Yeah. These are the ones that affect our everyday life.
Ways are, you know, taxes.
Affect our children. They affect, yeah, our taxes.
Quality of our policing force, which.
Where we live.
On and on.
Yeah.
Okay. You want the last word? Take the last word.
Oh, goodness. Well, I just hope that everyone goes out and votes. Obviously, I want you to vote for me. Shandy's, I'm on the ballot. I'm Shandy, pretty, stog still for place four. And I'm number one on the ballot. So if you can't remember my name for whatever reason, just the first bubble.
The first bubble. That's, I wonder, I think it does make a difference what your ranking is.
I have no idea. I, see, these are things I tell myself, like, I'm gonna Google that. I'm gonna figure that out.
No, it's true on the bigger ballots. Now, maybe on it, on it, just a race between, you know, your race and then place three. But if you have like a typical election where you have the back page, you get a lot of people to, you know, just fill in the first bowl. They see, or they look for the R, the D.
There's only two places though. I mean, it's like the smallest ballot I think I've ever filled out.
Yeah. I've had one that just had one name on it.
Oh, the last, the special one. Yeah, we did that.
Yeah. And let's hope the results are as encouraging as they were last time.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. And I appreciate the hard work you're doing. It's quite obvious you've done a lot of investigation on this. You've talked to a lot of people.
Yeah, I've done a lot of open records too. Poor Ashley. She's probably like, oh, here comes Shady with an open record across.
And she'll get over it. Anyway, she, you all have a long way to go before you beat Sarah Carlson on that. So.
Oh, that's true. Sarah is the queen of open records.
So, um, anyway, I'll see you Thursday with Mr. Johnson. And so have your questions ready and be nice.
Oh, and next Tuesday, have some questions for me.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Hang on. Can, hey, Taylor, can you hold on just a second? I just got a message from Michaela Hill.
Oh, yeah.
With the other video we saw. Can you, can we squeeze that in at the end here? Taylor.
He said he gave a thumbs up.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna, dead gummit. It's, um.
This is how you know it's a hometown show.
Yeah, it is. It is. But I just got it, just as we were going to the music and whatever else. But I've been wanting to show this for a while. I gotta figure out, okay, how